Welcome everybody here tonight. This is a special Board of Education meeting. At this time, we're going to have presentations and our first presentation, I believe, is transportation. I woke her up.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Matt Conti. I'm the Director of Transportation. Okay, we have a pie chart here. Second, salaries, no really variances. Substitute and overtime, we're down a little. We're just being a little cautious, so I'm bringing in extra subs and keeping an eye on the overtime. We have a variance of minus 5 percent, 5.4 percent for insurance. Contractual, we're up 12 percent. I have some explanations coming in the next slide. Mobile equipment supplies are up also. Tires, the cost of tires doubled in the last year. We'll have more information. Fuel, I think we're projecting and going along with the increase of fuel, but we pretty projected that pretty well. Down a little bit in oil and lubricants. General supplies, we are up. And others, which are telephone and postage, we are up. The transportation variance explanations, our anticipated insurance increases were not as high as projected as last year. Our contracted services are increased because of our GPS service contract was overlooked last budgeting, so we had to put that in. That's $6,500. And also maintenance of the GPS hard drives, it wasn't properly budgeted for, so we're putting in allowances for that particular maintaining the GPS hard drives. They're about $200 for each hard drive. So we're trying to have some repaired and we're also making sure that we have a proper amount so that we can have the hard drives which go into the GPS and also the cameras.
Is that part of the ticket?
Yes, there is.
Through BOSI's?
No, not through BOSI's. We do get those from one of our approved vendors that we have that put in bids through in the beginning of the year. We have a yearly bid for certain contracts and certain services.
Does BOSI have a bid for that?
I would have to double check. I don't believe so, because it's not through BOSI's.
Can you check for me?
By all means. We do get that from our approved vendor through our transportation buses, so that's where we usually get the hard drives from, from those particular contracts. Mobile equipment supplies are increased due to the cost of replacement of non-working cameras. We have older vehicles that have videotapes instead of the hard drives. We'd like to update those. There are approximately 18 to 20 cameras that we're going to replace so that we can honestly say we have a camera in every bus and when a parent calls up, we'll have that videotape for them to review and make sure that all things are going well. Also, we have a need of replacement of car seats. We have approximately 40 to 45 car seats. We're going to do half this year and half next year. They have a shelf life for about six years. If any of those car seats are involved in an accident or a vehicle, we have to take those car seats out of service just to stay with the mandates. An increased budget is due to the price of tires doubling in the last year. Prices are just outrageous for tires. Also, what we were doing was we retread tires, so we used to look for casings and were able to buy those casings to put on, but they're harder to find at this point. But we're keeping our eye open, looking for them. It was something that the shop did on their own, of just being very on top of things and making sure that we're keeping the budget down low. But with this increase, a lot of other companies were looking for them and doing the same thing. Proper adjustment for our cost of footwear, we didn't properly bill, provide in the budget for footwear last year, so it was a little increase, so I just wanted to make sure I put that in. So it was an extra $2,000 that we made sure that we are put into the budget. It's a great program when people are wearing the right footwear. We have lower incidence of workman's comp or disability. The garage, we have the pie chart here. For equipment, we're down. We have one piece of equipment we're going to buy for the shop. It's a laptop computer so that we could be more savvy when we're diagnosing a vehicle to see what's wrong with it. Also, the programs are multifaceted, so they need a lot more hard drive than the computers that we do have. Contracted services are up. Utilities and water are down. Just us watching what we're doing, keeping the lights off, not using the bus wash as much. Building repairs, same as last year. General supplies, same as last year.
Why are you doing that wash for buses?
Just we had a system where the driver, he said that I wanted to wash my bus, he would wash his bus. Now we're watching that to make sure that we're not doing it unnecessarily. So we do have the bus wash open at certain amount of times. We won't have somebody go through it daily. So we're just watching our Ps and Qs, just putting a more watchful eye over it and making sure that we're being...
During the winter time, it's easier to wash the bus. Cars need to have their cars washed, so that doesn't rust out. So why wouldn't the buses?
Oh, I'm just saying, our buses are washed properly, making sure that they're safe, but we want to make sure that we're not abusing the situation, so we do have the...
It must be a lot of fun going through a bus wash.
No.
Well, that's what I mean. Why would you go through a bus wash if a bus didn't need washing?
My sense is exactly that, so we're making sure that we're watching that. Contracted services increases are due to properly budgeting for needed ongoing repairs. Our overhead doors, been having a couple of problems with those. We want to make sure we properly budget it for that. Also, our lifts, we're making sure that we have revenue in there for our lifts to be repaired properly so that they last longer. Last year, we instituted a yearly inspection, so we're just putting money aside to make sure that we have proper funds to repair those. And again, I did speak about the utilities and water. BOSI's, we did have an increase in the driver-related services. We just, drivers-related services were properly adjusted to meet 50 percent threshold level for drug and alcohol testing for employees. We didn't have that threshold level there, so we wanted to make sure that we had the proper budgeting for that particular item. When Dave went over it with me, we pointed that out, so we just made sure we properly budgeted for it. Opportunities and savings, the Transportation Department is currently evaluating operational needs, cost savings, and our assessment for special needs bus transportation routes. Oswego BOSI's has been doing some contracted work for us for numerous children going out of district. Right now, BOSI's is no longer providing transportation as of June, so we're looking at different options, whether they take it in-house or look to go to another vendor. We're just looking to see what's smarter. So I'm working very closely with Don and also other district office staff members. We're currently utilizing GPS to assess and update all our runs, making sure that we don't have any time eaters and just being crafty with that. So I guess have to really give it to my dispatchers of them watching the bottom line and also just watching and evaluating our routes as we go throughout the year. Summary, the Transportation Department is actively and continually working on creating a environment of safety and best practices to provide and ensure safe, proficient, on-time service to the North Syracuse community while streamlining operating and maintenance needs. I really have to say that my staff and myself have really been working hard, of working together to make sure that we're watching our Ps and Qs, just watching things coming into a cohesive unit to work together with the schools and the community just to have a safe operation, but also to be cautious and make sure that we're watching our, the bottom line and making sure we're doing things efficiently. So we never say we did this because we did the same thing year after year. We're just keeping open minds and working together to come up with some good solutions, working hand-in-hand with the union, being safe but proficient. Thank you.
Are there any questions from any of the board members? Any more?
Me. Okay. How many mechanics do you have in the garage?
We have 10 mechanics.
10.
Then we also have a shop supervisor.
So there's 11. What about dispatchers?
Dispatches, we have four dispatchers.
Four. One of them being a man, or is that you?
No, we have four dispatchers plus myself, plus two office staff people.
Okay, so in other words, the voice, the man voice is you. Okay.
We do have people that work as sub dispatchers. There's another man in the office.
They're male?
Yes.
How many large buses do we have?
We have approximately 140 vehicles.
140? And how about small?
Excuse me, I gave you the total there. So we have approximately 119 full-size vehicles. We have pro...
Oh, that's a full thing? Okay. The lot, big buses are 119.
119.
And the smaller?
Would be the remainder would be about 21.
21?
Right.
Okay. Now you've got two vans out there.
Yes, we do. Two Suburbans.
Okay. How are they feeling lately? They're a little old.
There are 2,000 Eats Suburbans. Their proximity have about 80,000 miles on them, 84,000 miles, in very good repair and solid vehicles on the road.
Do you need a new van?
Myself, I do not. I think that we're doing well with the vehicles that we have. I think that we should maintain the projected bus purchases that we do have, having the full-size buses and the two smaller buses.
But the vans are going to be okay?
Yes, I do. They're in good repair.
You're not short on vans when someone wants to borrow them?
We do have some conflicts some of the time, but people do know that there's only two of them, but we are providing the services which is unneeded.
If it need to be, could you use a small bus? Or don't you let those out?
Well, it depends on when it is. If it's on the weekends, they're available. Otherwise, they're needed for their routes.
Okay, now what else do I have to ask? Keep going. I'll get to later.
Well, I think that we establish a great communication with the athletic department. We've been working hand-in-hand with them. We have a lot of goodwill and people always complimenting Jerry, who was our dispatcher, about what a great job she does. She really works miracles. But it's all about communication.
They're amazing. They really are. They're so kind and they're helpful to the drivers and amazing to sit there and listen to them. Okay, what I was going to ask you about is GPSs.
Yes.
Not all buses have them?
GPS, we do. Majority, all the vehicles are equipped with GPS. We have some cameras that are the older style that may not be working because of the age of the equipment, but...
The age of the GPSs?
No, no. Age of the cameras. The GPS systems are fairly new and they're up and running. We do have some small issues with them, but we're usually on top of them. Usually a fuse blew or the hard drive is not working. That's why I want to come up with some extra ones and also have the proper money in place to get the repairs done in the timely fashion.
Do you have GPSs on the vans?
No, no, we do not.
Is that a good idea to put them in there?
I don't know if it's necessary. Again, but it's up for discussion. I don't, I personally, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Any other questions? Matt, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Next, I see security.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm going to talk about security, our security budget, and the first slide. Give me one second here. Matt sabotaged the computer when he was up here. Yeah, I'm trying to get, let me see, I'll put it in slideshow mode. Hang on. Now, let's see. There it goes. All right. The first slide is the pie chart, kind of shows you the mix of security expenditures. The large section in the green represents primarily our SROs that we have, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. The blue section represents our security guards. As you probably are aware, we have security guards currently in the larger buildings, the two middle schools, the junior high and the high school. And we spend a little bit of money on substitutes and overtime for various special events and obviously substitutes when our guards are out. The largest increase on, when you look at the dollars and cents here, is in the contracted services, and that is substantially, we've budgeted for an additional SRO for next year. We'd like to have an SRO at each of our larger buildings. That's a school resource officer. We've got a wonderful partnership with the Onondaga County Sheriff's Department, and they do an amazing job for us. We have three SROs now, and we'd like to have four that would give us one at Roxborough, one at Gillette, one at the junior high, and one at the high school. That's probably the single biggest initiative. We had a slight increase in our Raptor expense for next year, where in terms of licensing and software support, and we're adding on, expanding that service a little bit. And that's the, those are the most significant items on there. Supplies, as you saw, a variance, we're spending more money on AID, AED batteries. Those are the resuscitation units that we have throughout the district. As you can remember, or might remember, when it was required, another mandate that schools have AEDs, we bought all the AEDs at one time, and so it's, we have items that are coming to end of their useful life, so we've gone through a fairly substantial battery replacement process. And then in terms of equipment, where we've been replacing the older units, and that's the, that's the nature of that expense. Opportunities, as I've, as I've mentioned to the board and to others in our school community, we've worked hard to do an initial review of our security post the Newtown events, and I've already spoken to you about our additional SRO. We're working diligently to make sure our building doors are locked whenever possible, and that was to create some suspense, I guess. And then additional training for employees, we're running an event on March 28th for, for our office personnel and security training. BOSI's is going to be actually running the event here in this, in this auditorium. And then we're doing additional training for our security guards, their annual training. John Ward has been working with his team to upgrade camera systems. We've upgraded the camera system in this building, and we're going to be expanding it at the high school. I mentioned earlier, expanded use of our Raptor system. That's the system that people come in, and it's a national database. When people present their visitors, come to our building and present their driver's license, we're able to provide a special ID for them so that we can identify visitors within our building and also know if those visitors have anything that we should be concerned about, such as maybe a level two or three sex offender. And then increased coordination with local law enforcement. I've already mentioned our wonderful partnership with Onondaga County Sheriff's Department. It's, you know, I should just take the opportunity to remind you that our sheriffs at any time can use their own Onondaga County Sheriff's Department issued badge and access any one of our buildings 24/7. And that's not only our SROs, but all of the Onondaga County sheriffs. And so that gives them access, and we continue to work on expanding our relationships with local law enforcement, and that's a big opportunity for us. And then obviously, as any employee here at North Syracuse knows, we've been really working hard to enforce our employee badge policies and procedures to make sure that we know who belongs and who doesn't belong, and we're dealing with that properly. And then we continue to, you know, do further review of our security procedures and work on implementing improvements as where opportunities exist. In conclusion, you know, I think this is an area, our society's changing, our community's changing, and this is an area that we're going to continue to see more and more attention and resources are going to need to be put into our, our security processes to keep our school building, building safe. And we anticipate that future projects, you know, will incorporate security upgrades, again, where opportunities exist, and we're very confident that our schools are secure and that, and that the environment is, is safe for our students and staff. However, there are opportunities, and as we look at capital projects in the future, we'll be looking at upgrades. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, questions? Okay. Glad you could step around, Ray. All right, Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, Don, I can't say enough for the SROs. They're doing a fantastic job. My big concern still is if one is out for training or whatever, we're not getting a sub. And what do we got to do to mend that problem?
Yeah, and I think, I think just like, just like us, the, the county is, has cut a lot of resources, and so they struggle a little bit when, when one of our people are out and providing a substitute for us. I think when we have a fourth SRO, it'll make it easier for us to swing our own resources around, and, and when there certainly is an emergency in any of our buildings, we've found that, that the Sheriff's Department is very responsive. But I'll continue that discussion with them about making sure that we get the proper coverage as per our contract with them.
Right, because that is the service we're paying for, so we should get what we pay for.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, George.
The SROs, is this a service that can be bet out among all the police departments?
Other police departments?
All police departments.
You know, that's an interesting question. The, the coordination of effort through Onondaga County Sheriff's Department, they have, our folks are specially trained school resource officers. I'm not saying that other local police forces could not have trained school resource officers on their staff. I just know that the Onondaga County Sheriff's Department has trained personnel, and we've had a longstanding partnership with them. But I'm not, I'm not aware of, within our district, the other forces having trained folks in school resource...
Glad Mr. Sifarad Brayton. All right, Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, Don, I can't say enough for the SROs. They're doing a fantastic job. My big concern still is if one is out for training or whatever, we're not getting a sub.
Yep.
And what do we gotta do to mend that problem?
Yeah, and I think, I think, uh, just like, just like us, um, the, um, uh, the county is, has cut a lot of resources and so they struggle a little bit when, when one of our people are out and providing a substitute for us. I think, uh, when we have a fourth SRO, it'll make it easier for us to swing our own resources around. Um, and, uh, and when there certainly is an emergency, uh, in our, any of our buildings, we found that, uh, that, uh, the Sheriff's Department is very responsive. But I'll continue that discussion, uh, with them about, uh, making sure that we get the proper coverage as per our contract with them.
Right, because that is the service we're paying for, so we should go where we pay for.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, George.
Uh, the SROs. Is this a service that can be bid out among all the police departments?
Other police departments?
All police departments.
Um, you know, that, that's an interesting question. The, the, the coordination of effort, uh, through Onondaga County Sheriff's Department, they have, our, our folks are specially trained school resource officers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not saying that other local police forces could not have trained school resource officers on their staff. Um, I just know that, uh, the Onondaga County Sheriff's, uh, Department has trained personnel and we've had a longstanding partnership with them. Um, but I'm not, I'm not aware of, within our district, the other forces having trained folks in school resource.
So in other words, you don't put this out for bid to all police departments, you just go to the county?
Uh, it's a, it's a great question. I, in, uh, in my short tenure here, I've, I've inherited that program and haven't really thought about putting it out to bid at this point.
So we're gonna think about that, okay. You already took care of the substitutes. I have asked for three additional SROs, not one. President Obama, in his speech on TV, which no one seems to have heard, only a few people, that he would pay for them if justified. And I think that someone in this district could find a way to justify three SROs. One at the high school, another one here, and then another one at Roxer Jet-Lot. That's three.
So just one, if I could add something. I heard recently that, um, that they may consider, uh, we were at the legislative breakfast this week and this, this came up, uh, that in looking at our tax cap, they're thinking about exempting certain expenses. SROs might be one of them. Bob, if you remember hearing that. Um, but, uh, but there are, a lot of the, the information, um, in terms of federal government programs and state programs is a little fuzzy. They haven't quite worked out all the details, but we've got our ear to the ground and we're, we're looking, uh, certainly if there's additional funding, uh, available, we wanna take advantage of that.
Well, there is. And if there is some kind of a grant that you have to fill out, I'm sure some wizards in this district could figure out how to-
Oh, sure.
How to get us three of them.
Absolutely.
Because we really need coverage. Um, I am totally against our sheriffs on overtime to attend our school board meetings. And I wanna know on what line item in the, in the 2012, 2013, we have budgeted for these police officers to be babysitters.
Well, one thing that we're, we're, um, very fortunate about, uh, is that our, um, again, preceding me, a fixed rate was negotiated so that when they do work these events, uh, we, we pay them a separate stipend that's much more economical for us. So it's, it's not quite as expensive as I think people might, might think. Uh, so, um, you know, they're not getting paid overtime per se, they're getting a fixed fee to, to do the events and, um-
Just so it goes on record that I am not in favor of-
Okay.
Spending taxpayer money for them to babysit us at board meetings. I, I think it's, maybe at this, they, according to what I hear and what I remember, they always come to the board meetings during this time because usually there's a fight about what we're gonna cut. And, uh, uh, there's not that many here, this feel, look like to me, they wanna fight. So I, I just, I'm sorry, I just feel that's wasted money.
Everybody else?
I, I just wanna make a few comments. I have to, uh, agree with Mr. Harrington. Um, our SROs, our security guards are fantastic. I've been in inch of the buildings. I feel secure. I think, feel the students are secure. I have to agree with, uh, Mrs. Sifarad Brayton with the high school. When I first came to, um, the school district, there were two SROs at the high school. There's 2,200 students there. That's the building I have concern with. It was a budgetary, uh, reduction. Um, and, and I know we talked to the, uh, SRO and she felt that, you know, she was able to, uh, keep the school secure, but I'm still with 2,200 kids in a, a building. High school, that age group, I, I still have concern with one. Um, same with George. Sometimes she's asked to leave the campus to go to something that involves one of our students and that leaves our campus without somebody, though they could call the Gillette SRO to come over. My other one goes to you directly. Uh, last year, the school, uh, board made a decision to eliminate, uh, the director of security. That responsibility is now yours. How have you felt this year with that new responsibility and do you feel it's, it's working well?
You know, I, I think it's not ideal, but it's, um, you know, it's what we've had to do, given the budget situation. I, I will say this, that, uh, you know, credit really goes to, you've mentioned the SROs and the security guards and our building administrators have really shouldered the load. So, um, administratively, I've been able to keep my head above water. Um, I've also been fortunate that Larry Butler has been able to pop in, uh, for specific things when we had the response to Newtown. Um, he consulted with us a little bit and that's been very helpful. Um, and John Ward and Dave Kasuf have really stepped up. So it's been a team effort to, to fill those shoes and, uh, so I've been lucky, I've been surrounded by a lot of good people.
Just, just one more thing. If you do get three additional SROs, why couldn't one of them be the lead SRO to be the security?
Yeah, I, I don't know enough about-
I-
Yeah, I don't, that's a great-
Thought I'd tell you that. That might be something, if there's a grant that you have to fill out, you might wanna add that little piece that we don't really have ahead of us security. And this new SRO could take on their job or one of the other ones, doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Don, thank you very-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next, I see on my agenda, science, math, technology, Mr. Rice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those in the audience who may not know me, again, as Mr. Crabtree mentioned, my name is John Rice. I'm the Director of Science, Technology Education and Math. Should be just clicking, right? There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, you can see from this slide, um, that this pie chart, that 94% of the science budget is made up of supplies, which will include the high school this year, along with the part-time person we have at the science center. The science center serves or, um, provides the science kits or activity kits to grades K through six in our school district. I should've went to the next one. Yeah, I just, I just hit the down, the down arrow right here and it's not moving on that. It's moving on my screen, but it's not moving on the-
Matt Conti did something to this.
Okay, so, let me just-
This young little boy can fix it for us. Probably one of the audience, show.
Let's see if it moves back. Okay, that's good. So again, the first slide, again, um, as I mentioned, the science center supplies our activity kits to grades K through six. And as you can see from this pie chart, that, uh, the bulk of the budget is made up of supplies and the, um, staff that we have, the part-time staff that we have at the science center. The chart that you see in front of you, um, reflects one major net change and that is with the supplies. As I mentioned previously, the supply budget increased from 7,000 to 24,000 primarily because this year it includes some of the supplies that we're looking at getting at the high school. Um, for many years, I think we've been very frugal in trying to get by with what we've had, what we've got to a critical juncture at this point to say, you know, we really need to start investing in some of the materials at the high school in order to meet the, better meet the needs of our students. Uh, you'll also see, which we'll mention on the next slide, um, there was a slight increase in the salary, um, of the person that we now have at the science center. Uh, there was, that person is paid on an hourly rate and there was a slight increase in that person's, excuse me, salary. Um, and as I mentioned previously, there was a $17,000 increase in our supply budget, uh, which primarily is because of some of the supplies that we're going, going to be investing in at the high school with, uh, digital microscopes, electronic balances, which will replace the triple beam balances that we've had since the eighties and nineties. So, again, that was well needed and some of the, uh, new electronic gadgets such as the hot plates with magnetic steers, which vibrate and automatically, uh, will mix and steer the liquids for us. And math, you can see that, I'm sorry.
Are you going to, uh, um, transfer, uh, science to the science kits at BOCES? No?
The, we are not currently going to go to the science kits at BOCES because that does not align, align with our curriculum. When the next generation science standards come out in two years, um, and if New York State adopts that, we will consider working with BOCES and, you know, working with them with their curriculum and possibly align our science, science kits. Uh, if you look at the cost of our science kit program though, you can see that it's, um, you know, it's a stream budget. I mean, most of the ex, supply budget here that you see is going to support new supplies at the high school. Uh, our science kit program itself only has a $7,000 supply budget, which is, you know, if we were to go to BOCES, we figure out the first year, it's gonna be 180 to 200,000 dollars. And if you look at the total-
Care to get state aid back on, you know?
We will get 70, some, you know, there'll be a co-sir get 72% or so back in, I know, the second year, but that first year, um, you know, it will have to be, we won't get that particular aid back.
And that science at BOCES also takes care of the high school, no?
No. That will only be-
Just elementary.
K through six, yes.
Okay.
So again, you can see we are very efficient, um, in what we do here at the science center and our science supply budget. Uh, getting back to math, um, some of the contractual services, as you'll see on the slide later, um, go toward some administrative fees in terms of, uh, membership fees for, like, um, the math league or for, uh, our national math, National Honor Society for, um, administrative dues or registration fees. The supply budget, um, you can see, obviously takes up the majority of that pie graph, which I'll get to in one second. And again, as I've pointed out on that pie chart, um, the majority of that is made up of the supplies, which reflects, um, the addition of new graphing calculators, the CAS and CX models. Um, these are, again, programmable, programmable calculators that are going to be replacing the old TI-83s and 84s that we have. Um, you know, there are, these, um, have, the resolution on these are amazing. They, they are solar powered too, with the battery life on one charge will last about two weeks, so we're not constantly replacing batteries in the classroom. And, um, as you probably are aware, we have to supply calculators for our students in the classroom and, uh, on all New York State assessments. So it's very vital that we have the, you know, the best and most up-to-date equipment for the students. Most of our calculators at the high school and junior high are several years old and many of them are breaking on a regular basis or, um, you know, the batteries need to be replaced and that's an additional expense that we incur every year.
Is there any way, John, that there could be a grant? That's a, to me, that's a big increase, um, when you're looking at from 400 to 47,000.
Well, I believe some of this may be covered under a co-sir, as we talked about. And we, you know, if we use some state, um, go with the state bids and so forth, I believe we will get back-
I think we can, we can buy it. Buy it on New York State bid pricing.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, the thing with John alluded to earlier, for so many years, we've not bought replacements and just stretched it out, that we're kinda hitting a breakpoint in some of these areas where the, they just have to have the equipment and, um, and we, I think the last several years have just put 'em off, put 'em off, put 'em off. And they're at the point now where they're in danger of not having the equipment the kids need to successfully complete the classes.
Yeah, and we, instead of replacing it with something that we've, you know, somewhat, that may be outdated, it's obviously best to go with something that's up-to-date and new and, and it provides the students with the features that they really are gonna be utilizing in college and beyond.
And we also have Donna-
Is this on?
We also have, uh, Donna Marie Noran, who's looking on a daily basis for grant opportunities that we can take advantage of.
Um, some of that budget also included, um, getting the navigator system, which is, um, a system where the teachers can utilize in the classroom and readily assess and monitor student understanding and comprehension. And it, if you've ever seen the teachers utilize these systems, they're wonderful. They can basically, uh, adjust on the fly and, and, and teachers, um, again, use them to the full advantage. So those are two systems that we are really looking forward to getting into the classroom and, um, multiple teachers will be able to u- utilize those systems. The last area that I have under my area is the technology education. Um, again, you can see that there's a little that's going to be allotted for mileage and transportation and conferences. That's really to support our Project Lead the Way program. Teachers have to attend training on a regular basis, um, and stay certified or meet, um, certain requirements in order for our students to receive the high school credit, um, or college credit through RIT. So again, with the Project Lead the Way program, there's a small amount to cover some of the, uh, training that they have to attend on a regular basis. Uh, again, some of, the most of what you see here are supplies, our supply budget is for next year is going to be 16,263, which represents, um, the first part of a three-part phase to support our CAD class at the junior high school. Um, the computer-aided technology classroom at the high school, um, most of the modules there, the engineering modules are 17 years old and, uh, they've just, we've, we've got to a point where we either gotta, we either have to scrap the course, which we don't really wanna do, or we need to invest in the course and, and really bring students up to date, um, with some of the engineering modules that we are looking to, um, purchase this next year, which is again, the first phase of a three-year phase in, for that particular course. And this will also allow us to, um, utilize this for other courses, um, once we've updated that program. So again, if you go back and look at some of the things that we're looking to do in the math, science and technology area, you'll see that some of the recent changes we've had in accelerated program, um, where now students go from earth science in eighth grade, physics in ninth grade, uh, they're now, this year, don't, they will not have the option to go into living or environment or chemistry next year. They will be going into chemistry as long as they meet that criteria of 85 on the regents and 85 in a classroom. So we, we intend, or we anticipate a little blurb in our chemistry numbers next year. So that's something I know, um, the department chair, Mr. Salmon, is keeping an eye on also that, you know, we watch those chemistry numbers carefully. Um, but this will allow all of our students who are in the accelerated program to now take two courses, two AP science courses at the high school. So we've really increased the rigor for that program. We also, uh, wanna continue providing various electives for our students, um, whether that's a career path for them or, again, to, um, meet the certain rigor. We wanna be able to prepare our students for college and beyond. Um, and the more AP courses, the, and more, uh, electives that they're able to take, we feel the better prepared they're going to be. Um, I know Dr. Dice, one of the, uh, things that you were very impressed with was, with our C program, the career exploration program. I know you attended the, uh, the, um, career exploration internship program presentations at the high school. We would like to see those expanded because it gives our kids a great opportunity to get into the field, to see if that's a career they really want to explore further or maybe take a career pa- pathway in. And as you heard, some of them really are gung-ho and, and know that's what they wanna do now. And then in other cases, they, they may have changed their mind, but they're not spending 30 or 40,000 dollars year one finding that out. They've, they've discovered that, um, already. And then of course, we would like to, um, see if we can reach out to the community and find partnerships with various corporations and, and really investigate in, um, STEM programs or other areas, like our Project Lead the Way program, build that with existing partnerships that we have or our engineering club. Uh, we do have partnerships currently that exist, um, but again, I think the opportunity is out there to possibly expand upon that and bring in some of the, uh, community experts to help us with that. And the last slide reflects some of the budgetary increase that you saw earlier. Um, our supply budget in the Mysterio, um, you can see went up about 10 or 11-fold. Um, and again, that reflects the district's commitment to, um, put those tools in a classroom and supplies in a classroom to better prepare our students for the next level. Um, again, uh, as I mentioned previously and, and Don, um, mentioned, you know, we've done kind of the best we could trying to do without the last couple of years, but we're at a- best we could trying to do without the last couple of years, but we're at a critical point now where we need to start investing into some of these supplies, equipment, and tools that are going to be used at the next level or that will better prepare our students to meet those challenges. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dice.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Our next presentation is ELA Reading and Social Studies.
Let's see. Let's get down here. It's showing up on the screen, but again, it's not showing up here.
We can see it here.
It's the computer.
Each of us.
That's okay.
Glad you got that right here.
All right. So I think if we hit this thing, and then just do the down arrow.
Down button.
Hi, I'm Jan Olson, and I am the Director of ELA and Social Studies. I was going to say, good morning, it's been that kind of day. I have, I will be presenting the ELA Reading and Social Studies budgets for you this evening. First, as you can see, the preponderance of the ELA and reading budget is teacher salaries. There's a little bit that goes to supplies and conferences, memberships. The variance that, let me see here, okay, there's a slight decrease in the salaries for the reading teachers in that a veteran reading teacher retired and another teacher came in at a slightly lower salary, and I think there's a little increase there in professional And there we go, the reduction in the teacher's salary because of the retirement. Opportunities. I'd like to talk to you about the recommendation that we'd like to make, that we add five additional AIS teachers for the elementary schools to increase support for struggling readers. We've seen a lot of evidence that this is something that would be a good focus for our kids, and the need is there. We've, we've got lots of data that has supported that. With a focus on early literacy, it's also important that we maintain lower class sizes at the K-2 level.
Jan, could I ask a question here first? Additional, we've seen this too, additional five AIS teachers.
Yes.
Is that K-2 or is that K...
We're looking at K-4.
K-4, we are looking at K-4.
Right, which will redistribute so that we can focus on those early readers and start making a difference right off the bat.
What I saw preliminary was, I thought I saw K-2, and I had a concern with 3, 4 also.
Nope, K-4 is what we're looking at. Any other questions on that? Okay, social studies. Again, the, the budget focuses on the salaries of the social studies teacher, teachers, and the variance is simply the contractual differences between last year and this year in their The, again, contractual difference, the credit hours the teachers have gotten, their tenure, and the contractual increase. Opportunities in the social studies realm. This year, the elementary and so, and middle school teachers got new textbooks. You well made a commitment to that, and they have, they're enjoying those books and the resources that come with them. High school, on the other hand, we've been having conversations about, do we start looking at textbooks, or does it make more sense at that level to start exploring technology and the different resources that are available there? So we're talking about providing the social studies teachers with smart boards and digital resources so that they can use those as they're instructing the students, rather than relying on textbooks. And I think, oops, that would be it for my presentation.
Questions? Any questions? I just wanted to say, welcome to our Syracuse. I know you've been here for probably five, six months, but welcome to our school district.
Thank you, I am delighted to be here, thanks. I hope I didn't break it.
Our next presentation will be diverse learning and student support.
Oh, it's not broke, okay. What are we doing now?
You're gonna be jealous when I was this.
Which button? Just down arrow. Welcome. Just getting my notes. Hi, everybody, welcome. Excuse my voice, it's a little off tonight. Okay, well, good evening, I'm Val DeFlorio, the Executive Director for Diverse Learning and Student Support Services. Okay, so, this budget is going to incorporate what used to be special education, and now it's going to incorporate a multitude of other areas. So as we go through this, keep in mind that this is no longer just special education, that this incorporates social workers, homebound, ADAPAP, there's just a whole bunch of other things as we go through. So when you see the change in, in amounts, you'll understand as we go through a little bit more. So basically, when you look at the budget, a lot of what is put into this, again, is salaries for teaching assistants, non-instructional salaries, tuition for students who are attending, students with disabilities who attend outside programs along with contractual. So that's where the bulk of our money is. Again, the breakdown of where all the salaries are in this budget. And when we look at where we have some of the variance, you'll see that every year what we try to do is we look at a budget to try to reduce the areas that we really haven't expended some of our money. And what you'll notice is that tuition was reduced in the one area based upon students who have moved back from a residential setting to either BOSI's or school-based programming. Our psychological services, again, professional salaries. And when you see the extra pay, ours, based upon our psychologists and the way that they work, they work 10 extra days during the summer, so it's not that they get extra pay on top of what they do throughout the school year. This is their summer days that they are afforded to continue on with CSE meetings and doing And the reason that you're going to see a change in this area is we did have a retirement, so based upon retirement and higher of a lesser, in the lesser range because of a newer hire, that's where you see the difference here. And then there's your explanation. And then we also decreased some of the salaries, just to comply with the decrease of funds available in general. Social workers are new to our, our department this year, so that's part of the diverse learners that you're going to see in this budget. Again, salaries. We do have contracted services. This is our student assistance counselor, and it does fall under this category, so when you're looking at with the contracted services, this is our student's assistance counselor. They work, she works with students grades eight through 12. Again, we, in the social worker category, we do, just so you're aware, we have five social workers in our district K-12. And I'll explain that in a little bit, but keep that in the back of your mind, five social workers, K-12. And again, in this area, we have decreased our supplies to comply with the fundings that we have available. Homebound has also been placed under our department, so homebound is now in our budget area. And again, this covers the extra pay and the mileage for our homebound tutors. What we are currently looking at right now is we're looking at the possibility of using the seats that we've purchased through BOSI's Alternative to Homebound, to maybe use that as a placement from, for some of our students, instead of going directly to homebound, and using some of the seats that we haven't used yet at Alternative to Homebound. Okay, this is just an overall slide of the number of special education programs per building. We put this in here just so that, you know, we kind of take a look at, sometimes when we see where all the money is being spent on our students with disabilities, sometimes it's nice to take a look at where all that money is going to. We do have quite a bit of programs throughout the continuum located in our buildings, K-12. And then for our diverse learners, here are the number of services that we have available for all diverse learners. Students that are covered under IDEA, which is special education, and then students who are not. So these are students who may have 504s, and these are students who are just general education students who receive services through the help of social workers, elementary counselors, our guidance counselors, ADAPAP counselors. This is all now under the umbrella of our department, and this is where you'll see them located throughout our district. You don't see us for the teacher of the visually impaired and the teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing. We have one of each, and there are like minute points of them throughout the whole entire building. They really go where the needs of the students are. So I think, again, looking at where we have our staff located is key. So our opportunities for savings, when we look at the strap plan and we're looking at, in the strap goal for, one of our charges was to look at a balanced budget. So the goal from our department is every year we do come back to you again after we've gone through our annual review meetings towards the end of March, when we've had that mad rush of meetings, and we'll report back to Cabinet with an updated financial report. And the purpose of that, at that time, we'll be able to report to the Board of Ed recommendations in areas where our department can provide possible additional savings. Again, in our summary and conclusions, to go back to the strap, our, the goal one was to provide systematic support and empower schools. And in a district of just over 9,100 students, we really do continue to maintain an equitable budget in special education, with just servicing over 12%, 12% of our population. And then here is one of our conclusions that we did come up with for the diverse learners. Again, linking back to the strap plan, to provide systematic support and empower schools, looking at the social and emotional development of the whole child. In a district of over 9,100 students, we really only have, we do only have five social workers K-12. So one of our, you know, recommendations would be if we could look at increasing our resources in our support service areas, because we have students that are truly struggling with various social and emotional issues, and we just really don't have enough staff to address those needs. We have five social workers, only two elementary counselors across six buildings, and then we have four ADAPAP counselors. So as we're looking at this, linking it back to the strap plan, that would be our summary and conclusion. Any questions on the diverse learning and student support budget? Okay.
Where does sign language come in? Does that come in with you?
Sign language would fall under our department if we offered sign language correct.
I would like to see that implemented.
Mm-hmm.
Little kids can learn it so much faster than an older child, and then just give them support all the way up through, and I think that, there were signing today at, at Smith Road, it just makes you cry.
And a couple of years ago, Steve Carr and I did look into that, even as possibility of a, as a second language. You know, we looked at, because Central Square right now, I think, at that time, was the only school district in the area that offered sign language. And we did have BOSI's, the staff from BOSI's actually come over and do some, a couple classes on American Sign Language to do that. So that is something that we can look into. In some...
I would appreciate that. There is a little young girl, I know her name, but I've told Matt Matola, there's a lady there that will teach her sign. There's a little child, maybe two and a half, that will be coming to our district, but you're obviously sending her to some school downtown. Don't know the name of it, I thought it started with an M or an I or something. Anyway, she, she's trying to sign with him because they must teach him signs at the school.
So she's two and a half right now, so she at Main Street right now?
No, 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 it's downtown someplace.
No, but she's two and a half right now, you're saying?
She's at Bear Road. Oh, no, no, that little, that little child, you're taking her downtown, transporting her to a school downtown. Don't ask me where, I have no clue. But this other little girl that's in Bear Road is close to that family and is trying to, she just loves this little baby. And they're, they'd learn how to sign, and somebody at Bear Road's going to teach her how to sign.
That's great. Yeah, that's, that's something that, because, you know, we have Lee Savyne here with us too, so he's our teacher for the deaf and hearing impaired, and I just said to him the other day, I said, please, please, before you plan your own life in retirement, you have to tell me when you are going to retire, so we can plan for the district, and we laughed about that, so.
I would appreciate that, thank you very much.
I, I wanted to, look, you don't have to go back to the chart, but social workers, there are five of them. And my concern, and we'll be talking about this weeks down the road, but at the high school, there's this .6.
Correct.
She's a great, great social worker. I've worked with her with students, but not to have a full-time social worker. So five is a very low number for our students in this district, 9,200 students, with the kind of concerns that we have in our community and what's out there. I'm hoping to, we can look at this aboard.
Great, thank you.
Any other concerns, questions? Thank you, Val.
Are we staying with you for BOSI's or what, how are you doing?
We were, we were going to go to music.
Oh, music, I'm sorry.
Music and art first, and then BOSI's.
Okay.
BOSI's is the lockest one.
She needs the down arrow after you get it.
I got it, escape. Where's the cursor, I can't see it. Do you see it?
No.
I think I...
Have they lost?
Hang on, let's hit escape.
I just wanted to...
No, you did, you did, you did, you did. I wonder where she did it. Cursor. Hmm. One more time, should happen. It's like a thing's locked up. There we go. I should have gone to BOSI's. That's weird.
Okay, while they're setting, while they're setting up, any students from participation government would like to come down and get their papers signed, they can, while they're getting this set up.
Tell anybody to sign.
What's that?
And you may, you may go to anybody at this table. Anybody at this table can sign it.
I'm sorry. Theoretically, I'm up here to help, but, yeah. There you go.
I signed it all right.
Do you want me to sign my whole one or can I see a man?
BOSI's, ELA Reading. I know, where is it, though?
Told everybody this would be a quick meeting tonight, see, they didn't believe me. I told Ryan Jordan.
What time is it?
Sorry.
Your brother home for mid-semester?
Thank you, you are lucky.
Frank here, right?
We're home and studying now.
How you doing?
They go in and see. Say hello to mom, okay?
I think they're testing us to see if they can print and write same time.
Kind of basic.
That worked out well. Gave you a cheese to take a breath.
There you go, thank you, honey, thanks for coming. Volleyball, huh?
Yeah, he's, he's also on the bowling team.
Oh, is he? Cool, really?
Mm-hmm. He's got his head shaved for that.
Off we go.
Okay, music and art.
Music and art. My name is Dan Bowles, I'm the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and...
Don Wilczynski, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
And we're going to be presenting music and art. This first slide, as you can see, we have a large majority of the money there for contracted services. What happens is there are instruments that need...
Don Wilczynski, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
And we're going to be presenting music and art. This first slide, as you can see, we have a large majority of the money there for contracted services. What happens is there are instruments that need to be tuned and repaired, so a bulk of that contracted services is for that area. And for equipment, again, purchasing new things such as either new instruments, new trumpets, all those for the eleven thousand dollars, and the supplies is very minimal in music. Again, there is no variance, and I can say that the music people have done a yeoman's job because they continue to do the same job and not have any increase to their cost, which sometimes is a little bit difficult for them, but they still continue to maintain. So there is no anticipated increase in that budget for next year. However, there were things that were stated in previous budget items where we talk about in the next slide. At the previous budget discussion, there was the discussion about possibly elimination of elementary band and orchestra due to the impact on student instruction resulting from students being pulled out. We are also currently looking at what other schools are doing in our BOSEs, and so when they're starting their musical instruments and which instruments they do offer at the elementary level. And we are also interested in exploring options for providing lessons in a way that is less disruptive to the classroom. So in, in essence, again, that budget is not increasing, but the programs still offer some quality, especially when you've gone to the Festival of the Arts and see what programs that they carry out. The next one here with art, again, you're talking about program with very little or very small budget. You're looking at contracted services, again, at nine hundred dollars there. Mileage, we have some traveling teachers, and the supplies are, are very small. But we have for the 1.9 variance for mileage, again, we do have some people that travel from point A to point B, but the, the big item here is supplies where you see a two hundred and one percent, and there was a change in what is done due to APPR and things that were necessary for the art department. So it was a, a greater cost to provide the materials that they needed for doing the assessments. So the variance increased due to federal mileage rate, and again, supplement materials for the art program, and that was due to APPR purposes. So it's quite, quite small, but again, the things that they do, they have a lasting impact. And in order to save some finances, we're going to review when supplies are ordered to see if there are cheaper rates that we can find. Yes, Mr. Crabtree?
No.
Oh, okay.
Question, George?
Back on the elimination of the possible savings for the elementary band?
Uh-huh.
How much is that actually going to save us? What's the number on that?
Three.
How much about David?
I think it's three twenty.
I'm sorry.
Three hundred and twenty thousand.
What's the saving? If we eliminate the elementary band and orchestra, what's that going to save us?
Three hundred and twenty thousand. It's basically four, four positions.
Okay. And how many students? Go ahead, I'm sorry. And how many students does that affect?
Well, I don't know the number of students. I think it was, it's the, it was the instructional piece that kind of led that, that discussion. We...
What was being discussed before was that there are students that are being pulled out of the classroom in order to go to these lessons, and the, the music people do rotate those times, so you're not the same child, they're not hitting the same time as far as what they're missing in the classroom, but there is instructional time that is missed.
That does not happen at the middle school, in the high school, in the junior high, students leaving for lessons?
Actually, that was a concern that was brought up, I believe, at a parent meeting. So we are going to be looking at the upper grades to see, to ask the same question, what's the impact instructionally? Because parents indicated that they have commented that they do not want their kids pulled out during instructional time.
And that question was brought to us, I believe, on Thursday of last week, which was unknown to us at that time.
So these are the parents that want the kids to take music lessons but the women pulled out of class?
Well, what, what we're doing is, we're looking at other opportunities or other times of the day when students can receive their lessons.
Okay, did you have some questions?
Yes, I cannot, I'll support that, okay. If you want to bring the kids in earlier in the morning, is that what you're talking about, so you don't pull them out of school?
Yeah, we're looking at can we pull them in earlier? What about after school?
After school, then how are they going to get home?
Those are all of the things that we're looking at in terms of recognizing that some board members do have a concern about the elimination or the recommendation to eliminate. So we're looking at other opportunities because right now it is impacting the instructional piece, and so we're not saying that we don't value it. What we're saying is that we can't have it impacting instruction during the day. So how can we still kind of get the best of both worlds if indeed the board directs us in that, down that path?
That's only me, but I, I won't support cutting it. You can figure out another way, but I'm not going to have you do it after school and the parents that got to pick up the kids. You're going to bus them home, just like sports.
I'm not going to comment tonight on, on, on this slide. I'm disappointed in this slide, okay? And I'll talk at another meeting, but please come to us as you have the last two years. Don Keegan gave us the presentation last year on other schools, because I can tell you, there is in a school, elementary K-four, K-five, that doesn't have, very few, if any, do not have this in their schools.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Don.
I want, I also want you to implement piano. Don't have piano lessons in this school. I don't, why? Got a lot of pianos, got to teach them how to play them.
Okay, they're just tough to bring home and back to school on occasion, so.
What did I do? What'd you say?
It's tough to transport the piano. That was a good line. That was good.
That was a good one, though. Yeah, I'll admit, that was good. Is it getting late or what? That was good. That was good. But please, that's, that's an add thing I want. I don't want you cutting anything, I want you to add.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, thank you very much. And our next presentation is BOSEs.
This is our BOSEs presentation. Obviously, we, we rely heavily on BOSEs, and there's a number of us that are involved in that process, so we'll...
They're all lined up.
Be switching chairs here, but let me give it an introduction first. You know, BOSEs offers us a lot of different services, and, and we use those services in order to draw on their expertise in terms of programs and resources and the special people that they have. Helps us achieve economies of scale. It helps us provide our students with expertise that we, as an individual district, couldn't afford to provide on our, on our own. And also, there's a financial incentive. The state of New York insents us to use BOSEs services because shared services are theoretically more economical, and we get a maximum of seventy-five percent aid for covered services. And so we're constantly talking about ways of, of partnering with BOSEs. And the purpose of this presentation is to just give you a little introduction or overview of all the various things we're doing with BOSEs. So I'll turn it back over to Val.
Hi. Okay, again, the special education part of the BOSEs is for our students who need programming that requires more than can be established in a school-based programming. These are students who have either significant social, emotional needs or physical needs that require services outside of the school-based program. Currently, we have fifty-one students that attend a BOSEs program within this setting right here, and along with that, you'll see comes the related services also. And then just the breakdown of each program that is offered at BOSEs and where our students are attending. And then some of the explanations that you'll see is that we did have some increases. We also, however, we do not have any students currently attending Oswego County BOSEs. That's a first. I have been here nine years, and that's the first time that we haven't had anyone attend an Oswego County BOSEs. And as you've heard Matt, actually, Conti talk earlier, we are not having the BOSEs service, the busing service there any longer, so just kind of works out right now that we don't have any students attending there. But overall, we continue to have students that are in our district with significant emotional needs that do require BOSEs programming. But I, I really do want to, you know, remind everybody that we do have great staff that work really hard with our students, and we really, we do service our kids, and when it is time to make that recommendation, the recommendation we make to BOSEs are really sound recommendations. And then our opportunities for savings, again, you know, I can't stress enough, you know, aligning it with the strap plan, that, you know, our, our budget really does reflect the needs of students that require programming in a more restrictive environment, and these needs are really based upon the physical, emotional, or intellectual needs. Next comes the services that fall under the diverse learners. We kept special ed on here because, like, the audi, the school-to-work and the vision and speech services are in here also, but what I really wanted everyone to be aware also is that diverse learners also have a huge impact on the BOSEs budget, and it's not just all special education. So we have students that are attending Career Academy, Stars and Choices, our alternate high school programs, which I love. I think it's great that we have our students and are very successful there. And again, the push, if you've never been to one of the graduations, please go to those graduations. Our new visions in our career tech education, we just did a field trip with the guidance counselors over to Career Tech and to see the new vision program, and that was great. So hopefully, when the new requirements roll out for graduation, we'll be able to start looking at how we can get more students involved in career tech education. We went through a whole series of different areas with the guidance counselors, we went through auto tech and all that, it was a great day. So again, the breakdown of where the money is going for our diverse learners. And then again, this was just kind of line item by line item, just to show you where the differences were back on a couple of slides in front. So just changes in numbers. We did change some of the seats. We didn't eliminate any seats between Career Academy, Stars and Choices. We just moved them around a little bit because what we're finding is that we need more seats at Stars as opposed to Career Academy, just due to the needs of our students becoming a little greater. And then again, linking it back to the strap plan, is that this budget really reflects the needs of the diverse learners that are in our district. Any questions on the BOSEs or the diverse learner needs? Yep?
How many students did you say are involved in BOSEs, the first one?
Okay, the specialized BOSEs, about fifty-one students right now.
And how many diverse?
Okay. Now, for the Reach Career Academy, Stars, all to Homebound, there's about a hundred and fourteen. The ones that participate in Career Tech New Visions, about a hundred and thirty-six go to Career Tech, seventeen are enrolled in New Vision. So we do a pretty good job at utilizing our BOSEs services.
One thing last year, and I could be way off on this, Val, with the school-to-work, did, did we not eliminate something that we were working with BOSEs at the high school, with school-to-work? Am I correct on that?
Okay, there's two...
A program? I could be, I could be wrong on this.
Okay, there's two different programs that we were talking about. We have, we had in the specialized program, we had our own work study that one of our classroom teachers did.
Okay.
But when we were looking at the needs of...
It was a BOSEs program?
It, no, this was our, well, it was our own work study. This was through Vested, which is now Access VR. It's the transition piece in that all students with IEPs have to have to complete before they graduate. So we had a high school teacher do that. However, when the needs of the students came up from the junior high to the high school, we needed to have another fifteen-to-one classroom teacher. So we went to BOSEs and we said, "Can we participate in your school-to-work program?" So they then created a work-study program for us through a BOSEs program. So they run our work-study with job coaches, and we have this year fifteen to twenty stu, we have fifteen right now. Next year, we already have nineteen students already lined up for that because based upon their transition plans and their IEP, we already have them ready to go, lined up with job coaches through BOSEs. Then, the school-to-work with the BOSEs program that is through Career Tech, is that the one that you're referring to?
I think so, yes.
Okay. That program that we're looking at is embedded in the Career Tech New Vision, and that's the one that we just went, when we went with Bob and Marie Ariola, that's the one that we just took the field trip with, with the guidance counselors, and just went over there to look at that. So that was part of our field trip that we went on.
So why is there a big, there's a large decrease in school-to-work? You probably explained it, and I didn't.
Because when the codes, that's something that Dave and I were working on, to make sure that the codes accurately, accurately reflected exactly where that money had to be realigned to.
Okay. Any other questions for Val?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is our arts and education program, and as you can see, that the largest amount is the Merry Go Round Playhouse, I just don't know this part, which we have a decrease in. Next slide, yeah. As you can see, we had less students participating, so that's why you see a decrease there. But our arts and education subscription is done, your PTAs, PTOs, PTGs, put in the money for that, and then basically run that through the district. So there is a fee for the district to participate in this, however, it's really the PTGs, PTOs, PTAs that support this, for the touring artists who, this year I heard you had Patricia Palaco visit. So it's people like that that they pay for, and then they get this, and then there's a fifty percent return rate to the PTO, PTGs, PTAs to fund the next programs coming through. And that's, you can see here, that's why we have a decrease, is because of the Merry Go Round Playhouse.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't have, do you have any question? I am, that's, that's, that part is simple.
This next part here, there are several different pieces to this pie, and the first piece we'll talk about, you see, summer school is up there, instructional graphics, school quality services, curriculum mapping, school improvement, hospital-based programs, and Anarondak Marine Summer School. Now, one of the things is that many different directors service some of these programs, but I'll be reviewing them with you today. With summer school, there's a variance of about 1.5 percent, and that was an estimate of just increase, basic increase in cost. One of the things that we look to do yearly is to reduce the amount of cost for summer school, basically trying to make sure if we have more students that are successful by the end of the year, that summer school cost will go down. And we often not only are monitoring that near the end of the year, but also as students who need to go to summer school, we're making those phone calls to make sure that they are enrolled. Instructional graphics, that is when we provide large print orders, such as calendars and things like that, brochures, so that's an estimate of an eight-point-three percent increase. However, right now, with all printing, we're looking to find ways to reduce those costs, so that is just a, a guesstimate if we need to do any large print, but we're going to be exploring options to reduce that fifty-two thousand dollar budgeted item. Curriculum instruction and assessment is going up... Curriculum instruction and assessment is going up 14.2%. Given all the assessments and mandates, there is an increase in that budget because we need to make sure we're supporting any curriculum work that needs to happen for all the teachers to make sure they're successful. Curriculum mapping is currently underway and what we're anticipating is having a decrease in that because we'll be largely done with that project. Again, we will continue to tweak the maps, but a good portion of the work will be done. So we're estimating, needing less time to do that work. With school improvement project lead the way, that is due to licenses and there is no increase for that for next year. With hospital-based program, hospital-based programs are students that are hospitalized and need to be educated. It's a contract that we do with BOSI's and someone from BOSI's goes and provides that education for students that are in the hospital. And the last one with Anarondak Marine Summer Program, I believe you heard John Rice at one time talk about the wonderful experiences that students, I believe on Long Island and have gone. And the students will pay a little bit of what the coaster does not pay for, but it's a wonderful program that students take part in. So variance explanation for summer school, there's basic summer school increase in cost. For the curriculum mapping, the decrease, there's less time needed for that and increases due to outside contracts with BOSI's services, the other variance. Opportunities for saving, if we reduce the number of students that need to go to summer school, it will cost us less money. And the request for large print orders, if we try to find a better way or even not do some of those orders, it'll reduce that cost. And refined mapping due to reduced hours will be less money for the curriculum mapping. Okay?
I got a question, I can remember the phone.
Okay. We'll come, we'll come back to it.
Oh, summer school.
Summer school, yes.
Yes. There is a new person at BOSI's for summer school.
Correct.
I have told her that we are not happy in our circus with the summer school program. And she asked me why, what was wrong and I told her she had to come here and ask.
If she comes here and sits down with myself and Dawn, we'll review some of the complaints, especially looking at getting information and data back has been a big problem, especially at the end of summer school, part of the things with registration and some of the things that BOSI's has held us to when we're registering students and students that don't show and the charges that they still incur. So those are some of the things right off the top that we can sit down-
But she has never contacted you.
That's not true. We met with her today.
Okay.
Melissa Julian-
Going to say, oh my.
... myself and Donna Marie Norton met this morning with Elena and we did discuss those things. I just haven't had a chance to update Dan.
She's just brain doing this.
She is, and she has great plans already in place and she's meeting with our counselors, I believe, in a couple of weeks, wasn't it, Melissa? Yeah. And outlining exactly what they need to do to make sure we get the kids that we need there. And she has some other plans. So she seems very well organized and heard your feedback because she came with very specific plans, so we're hoping.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is the best for last?
Well, no, actually, I think Dawn's going to go after me, so you have to decide who's the best or who's the last. This is all, this pie chart that you see, I just want to point out that quite a few of these charges here are not part of the business office, they're part of the district belonging. The, particularly the administration and the rental and capital expenditures, that's for the district to be part of BOSI's. So I don't really have a direct impact on that. The others, in the variances, what you'll see is not too many changes except for on the health and health, safety and risk management and then in the copy center. The others are relatively small. The copy center, we've had extra X money in there for the last couple of years because we've been using a lot of paper in addition to what our standard allotment was. And it appears that we've, we're able now to reduce that excess amount. So we're not using as much as we were concerned that we would use. The Medicaid billing, there's an adjustment in the BOSI's cost allocation. I think that might have been last year was our first year using that system and they probably just made an adjustment when they saw a year's history. The health, risk and safety management is, whoops, excuse me, is really related to the elimination of the director of safety and security so that we have Mike Haiti here more than we've ever had someone here in the past. And that's allowed us to maintain the program without making Dawn be more overwhelmed than what he already is. He didn't tell me to say that. BOSI's information, this is Donna Marie, is Donna Marie here?
No.
Okay. I think I can, yeah, sure. Whoops. Somewhere there's a chart, yes. The, there's basically very little change here, a little bit of change in the test scoring really has to do with the number of students probably that are involved in the different tests. Every year, they, they make a chart of how many kids are in fourth and sixth and what tests they're taking. So that's basically, there's very, very minimal change there. Test scoring budget reflects what needs it, what we've spent. We need to offer GED as a recommendation as a means to complete high school. These are, these are people who don't graduate and they are our own high school students and she sees no need to increase the slots within the BOSI's program. Those items can stay where they were in terms of cost. The test scoring is mandated, everything that we do is regional scoring with BOSI's and we've been doing that in the last couple of years. We get some money back on the substitute teachers that we bring in when our teachers are off scoring. And the GED program is, it's not a state mandate, but it's really necessary to meet the needs of all of our students in the district.
This slide, as you can see, there's a lot going on here in technology. A couple of the bigger, bigger areas are computer hardware and the Center for Learning Technology leases. We, we have, there's been a trend over the years to lease equipment from BOSI's. So it's not unusual for us to have computers and other peripheral devices here in the district that are owned by BOSI's. And what's nice about it is we get aid on the equipment and then when we're done with it, we return it, turn it back to BOSI's. There's a lot of services here, whether it be our student information systems, that's SIS Web, or our data warehouse where we, we manage all of the various data for our district, distance learning and subscription services for Discovery, United Streaming and Media Connect and whatnot. A lot going on in the technology budget. Not a lot of variances. As a matter of fact, our budget in this area is going down overall. This is the first of two pages. And I've got a couple of variance explanations that I'll show you in a minute, but as you can see, the overall budget in technology is going down, thanks primarily to renegotiated costs on our fiber optic lease and our telecom. And so as everybody probably is aware, our, our building and BOSI's are all connected through fiber optics and those leases on that, for that service have come down quite a bit with this budget cycle. AV repair, we use two individuals here in the district that go around and I think you may or may not be aware, we have over 4,500 computers, hundreds of smart boards and projectors and it's a pretty significant amount of equipment, whether we're servicing that equipment, changing light bulbs in projectors or just doing basic maintenance on the equipment. It's quite a job and we actually have BOSI's individuals doing that. On the telecom and fiber, I already mentioned that we've, we've got favorable rates with this budget cycle. And on the CIS Web, we're, we moved off of my grade book and we're going to the CIS Web grade book module and that resulted in a slight increase in the CIS Web costs. Opportunities, we continue to work closely with BOSI's in technology or to take advantage of their resources and expertise. As the board knows, and I think many people in our, in our school community know, we have a technology committee. Our second of three major meetings is this Wednesday and we're looking forward to presenting our technology plan to the board in June. And we're very fortunate to have a senior level individual from the RIC participating in our technology committee and that's been very helpful. His input is beneficial to our process. And then our information technology folks, a nice feature being part of the BOSI's is that our leaders in information technology have an opportunity to sit with their counterparts at regular meetings at the BOSI's and exchange ideas about what they're doing with technology. And so that's been very helpful to us and we're getting a lot of ideas, I think, that are going to both allow us to manage our costs better as well as enhance our services. So, you know, finally, just BOSI's overall, as you can see, we just scratched the surface in this presentation. We use BOSI's services in every area of the district. And, you know, we're going to continue to work on, on exploring ways where we can partner with BOSI's for the purposes of identifying best practices, leveraging their expertise and, and creating economies of scale. And that's it. Any questions on technology? Or BOSI's in general?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all the directors and anybody that presented the last two weeks. If, Kim, you could relate that. And Dawn, to all the people that presented the time. And the other thing my observation is, and I noticed it last year, is the pie charts. I enjoy pie charts, circle charts, whatever you call them. And I think they explain things very quickly, you know, looking at them. And I think the public has also said that when you put them online, that they're able to see those and understand them much easier than a bunch of numbers.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
But of course you took off on me. Okay. I got to wait for you to get, make money.
Okay, let's hear it.
Get yourself a collection agency, number one. I want you to do this. To collect money from employees owed to the district for overpayment, number one. To pay for my music teacher to teach piano. Collect monies from students or parents that have destroyed district property. Residency issues. When we find that a student has been attending the school district illegally, is the school district billing the parents for tuition costs from the onset of the issue when the student first attended schools in this district illegally? Therefore, that's a lot of money. And I got to tell you, we have, we should be going after that money. And I want you to get a collection agency to do that. The next thing is, if, if the non-district student, okay, is playing sports in this school district, is it a violation of Section 3 rules?
I don't know the answer to that.
I know, I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking you. Because that would, that could come down on us pretty heavily when you've got district, you've got a district that has children in here who are not residents. I don't know how that works with Section 3.
I will just say that Donna Marie Norton handles our residency issues and she is just vigilant in terms of-
Oh, I understand that.
-you know, managing that. And, and if she even gets a sense, God bless her, she's actually gone out to houses, knocked on doors and, and she really polices that, that very well. So I'm not aware of a big issue with non-district residents in our district. And, but I know Donna Marie really keeps her eye on that and works closely to make sure that they're detected.
If you sit down and talk to some people, you'll find out there is. And that we need to charge these people and have a collection agency go after them.
I think the, the question is, can we recoup that money? But on top of that, Donna Marie is diligent in identifying families who should not have their children enrolled in our district. I think the question just is trying to strike the balance between what that, the number of students we're identifying and the amount of money it's costing the district for Donna Marie and an investigator to go out and basically lay in wait in their cars on more than one occasion to determine if indeed a child goes to school here. So that is something we will be talking about further with the board.
Any other questions? Dr. Dice, you want to make a comment? Did you want to make a comment or is that it?
Um, no, it's okay.
Okay. The school board has, you know, talked about opening up to comments for a greater length of time during the budget. And so tonight, we will have some speakers and next week, we'll have a time for people to, to talk about various topics and we'll have it at the beginning of, of our meeting. Tonight, our first speaker is Phil Clery.
Good evening. First, thank you for having these opportunities for community people to come out and talk about our budget. It's an important opportunity, I hope lots of people take advantage of it. My name is Phil Clery. I'm a district resident and taxpayer, proud graduate of our, of our schools and a teacher at Main Street. I always like to add that I, one of my greatest joys is living and working in my hometown. And I know that feeling is very much shared by my colleagues on the NSCA officers. I'm here tonight to do two things. The first one is to talk about some really tremendous high school students and experience we shared this past weekend at a legislative meeting. Second, to draw connections between those outstanding high school students and our youngest students in our district. And third, what I like to call getting to the ask, I'm going to ask you to do something and ask you to join with us. So the first thing, this past weekend, I had the genuine privilege to attend legislative meetings with our legislative committee led by Mr. Crabtree, Mr. Keegan, and three wonderful Sienna students. I can't tell you how proud I was. I see very young children all day, but it's amazing to see our young adults going to legislative meetings, meeting with Senator Valesky, speaking in a very articulate way about what's important to them and advocating, not just for themselves, but for all of their colleagues at the high school and for our community. They followed up an act that I thought could not be followed on Saturday morning when I had the opportunity to attend the New York State School Boards Association Legislative Breakfast. I sat next to Zoe. Zoe had an opportunity to ask a question to the senators who were there. And she asked a question of Senator DeFrancisco and explained in a detail that brought true understanding to what cuts to electives that our high school will do. I've heard about that situation for quite some time, but to hear a student describe the impact and loss of opportunity for her and for her friends at school was powerful. The senator responded and kind of gave it back to her. This guy is a trial lawyer and one of the most powerful senators in New York State. And she stood toe-to-toe with him, made her point, and moved on. Like, it's amazing that we have kids like that. And although she is outstanding, she's only a representative of hundreds and thousands of our students, who they are right now and the ones who are coming up who will be. And we have, we have a great deal of pride in them. Now, I have to draw a connection to our youngest students. You know, where do, where do our graduates get their start? Well, about 20% of our students get their start at Main Street. Main Street, as you know, is our early education program for both students with disabilities alongside their non-disabled peers. And a good chunk of them, our non-disabled peers are, again, a good chunk of our incoming kindergarten class. Now, the conclusion, the connection I want to draw is that the terrible problems that are happening in budgeting for K-12 are exactly what have been happening in 4410 schools and preschool for 30 years. Everywhere we go, we hear people say, is Main Street still open? And we say, yes, of course it is. We struggle every day. We make the cuts we have to make to maintain our mission and we continue. And that conversation's been going on for 30 years, for 10,000 graduates. And now, sadly, we hear that in K-12 and we have a great deal of sympathy and lend our support. we hear that in K-12, and we have a great deal of sympathy and lend our support. So what I'm asking today of you, and hopefully people who might be taking note of our meetings, to act, to participate. We had a few students and some, some of our staff members at legislative meetings. Everyone can participate by calling and contacting their legislators, and they really should. There will be meetings coming up later this week with representatives from the governor's office and the staffs and other legislators from our area to talk about Main Street in particular. A paper circulated to you asking people to contact your legislator. Call them regularly, call them in their home office, call them in Albany, and tell them that we would like their support in helping schools like Main Street continue their mission to stay open and operating. And I think the most powerful statement people can make is asking that funds be available for schools, for public schools, P-21, from our preschools to our post-graduates. So the materials are circulated with you, this is my ask. What I've been telling folks is if you see me in the coming weeks, I will put my hand on your shoulder and say, will you please join me? And I'm asking you to move that forward and ask people to join you. Thank you very much.
I know we're not supposed to talk, but I, I wanna thank you personally, Mr. Clary, for all you do in this area. Mr. Clary, Mr. Corolla, and some other of our people went to Albany last week, and they participated with over 1,000 other people to tell our legislators that funding is not enough for our schools. And we appreciate you taking that time and taking all our postcards, all the postcards you people filled out, and the students at CNS and the junior high, and, and all the teachers were delivered. And also, Mr. Clary, thank you for setting up these appointments, and I tell my fellow board members that Mr. Clary has set up this Friday, 4 o'clock, same hallway, different senator. We will be meeting with Mr. DeFrancisco's associate, and we are bringing our students again, because our students make a difference. Thank you, Phil. Go ahead. Can these be added to the telephone numbers? It's a great idea, George. Okay, our next speaker, Christian Oliver.
My name's Christian Oliver, and many of you know me, and those of you who don't, nice to meet you. I am a graduate of CNS, I'm in my first year of college down in Long Island University, where I'm studying music education. I'm coming to talk to you today, mind you, on my own free will on my spring break, to go in support of the string and band program in third and fourth grade, as I have seen it was being put up for elimination. I wanted to step back and look at something, though, is the idea of the 21st century critical thinking, the idea of where we're pushing our students to go. And one of the things I've been doing this year down in Long Island is studying what children are brought into their lives and what they are doing. We stimulate an infant by using color, sound, words, art, all of these types of things to help them develop as a human being and grow in culture. And then, as they get older, we start taking those material things, those visual things away, and start implicating them into education. One of the things that I've noticed is when we're starting to do that, the students are starting to lose their imagination, they're starting to lose their ideas of critical thinking. And we are telling them that, you know, these processes are not the right way. Who's to say, though, that you can't make a paperclip and make an airplane out of it? But we are telling them, you can't, it's not correct. And one of the things that I've noticed with that is the place where students find their most creativity is in the music and art classrooms. I was watching, at 2:00 AM in the morning one day, a Sir Kenneth Rogers, or Robinson's video, and he had stated in it, he goes, he had met this girl who, in 1930s, her parents were told that she had a learning disability, and that they should take her to a psychologist. Psychologist takes her over and is talking with her mother the entire time as the little girl waits. After about 30 minutes, the doctor says, we'll be right back to the little girl, and steps out with the girl's mother. Before leaving the room, he turned on the radio, and he left, and he had both the mother and himself view the girl through a window. What he saw was the girl got up and started moving. The girl started dancing and started making patterns with her body. Doctor said, your daughter does not have a learning disability, your daughter just is a dancer. He goes, you, your daughter needs to move to think. And even what I have noticed is if we are moving towards the 21st century idea of being critical thinkers, we need to allow kids to start finding ways to think differently, that one way is not the right way. Some need to move. For me, it was I needed to play, I needed to orchestrate in my mind to make connections through history and math and science, to be able to put all these together. And once we cut our third and fourth grade strings and band programs, we're automatically cutting those students' chance to find a different way to think, a different way to motivate themselves to grow and to become educators of themselves and researchers themselves to find out what is best for them. So what I'm asking you is, oh, and by the way, just to point out, that young girl who was the dancer, she ended up being the number one choreographer for Cats and Phantom of the Opera with Andrew Lloyd Webber. So she came up pretty darn well. So what I'm just asking is that 40 minutes is not enough for students of music, of art, once a week. They need to be immersed in this, to be not only a student, but to be human. Because the moment we take away the arts, we are automatically taking away what has made humanity so wonderful and so beautiful. So I ask you, while you have critical judgments and understandings to make, if we are really, truly moving into a 21st century idea of thinking, is it our idea to cut what is going to make students really think outside the box, the best way we go, or is it to immerse them in it and make them become critical thinkers through the arts? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jimmy O'Reilly.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the music department. I'm a ninth grader at the junior, at the nursery, junior high school. I'm here tonight to talk about not cutting music from our district because some students like music class and playing instruments such as band and orchestra, summer chorus and drama club, and if you cut that, it'll ruin their chance of getting an education in music. I'm in band as well, I'm a percussionist, I've been in that since seventh grade at Roxborough. Yeah, and music's a great thing, 'cause everyone likes music and all that, and I'm also asking you not to cut any music activities such as jazz band and breath ensemble and chamber orchestra, because some students like that, and our elementary students that aren't kindergarten, first, second, maybe third grade, want to play an instrument, and they wanna learn how to play it and learn how to do well, and some students wanna be musicians when they grow up, and, yeah, and. So I ask you not to cut music because students wanna continue with it in their future, so I'm asking you to please keep music in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. I need a motion for adjournment. George, second. Michael, all those in favor? And we are adjourned until next Monday, same place, same time.